It's been there since, I think, the bike race. Grass is getting a little long.
At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, August 29th Planning Commission meeting to order. That brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is roll call. Pid here. Price.
Here.
Hema.
Here.
Sharnell.
Here.
Shoblam.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Lindell.
Nah.
No Lindell.
No Lindell. Brings us to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Price and a second by Ms. Sharnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to number four, which is the approval of the minutes from July 11th, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Shoblam and a second by Mr. Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public input. Seeing nobody here, I'm guessing we can go to the public hearing. So we've got six A.
Zoning.
Zoning amendment and rezoning. B2 Highway Business District.
I'll go ahead and introduce the two items pertaining to this public hearing. One is a proposed zoning amendment to the B2 Highway District. And the second hearing, related hearing, is to rezone three parcels of property from the Medical Plan Unit Development District to the amended B2 Highway District. So they're combined public hearings tonight for those two issues. The commission has talked about this going back to July with regards to the proposed project at the former grandpa's garage facility owned by Dave Olson of Avalon Trucking. Dave was here speaking, introducing the commissioners to that project a couple of months ago. He's still moving forward with plans to develop the project, consistent with his explanation to us that night. So at that point, the Planning Commission actually initiated the public hearing. The public hearing to amend the B2 District and the public hearing to rezone the three parcels of property. So I know, with the exception of maybe Mike Daniels, our newest member. Welcome, Mike. I think the other members here are all pretty familiar going back into July. What I've got up on the screen is the proposed amended language to the B2 District. And you can see under the purpose section up on top, we're talking about adding some industrial, limited industrial uses to the B2 District by conditional use permit. And the uses that we talked about back in July of adding to the B2 District as conditional uses are listed as item P, Q, R, S, T, U, and V. And those are the uses, you'll probably recall, we went through a laundry list of industrial users, uses that we thought might fit. And these reflect the list that we agreed to back in July. So again, with respect to the zoning amendment, if this goes ahead with your recommendation and ultimately is adopted by the City Council, there will be some limited industrial uses that would be allowed by conditional use permit in the amended B2 zone. That's issue number one. Issue number two, relative to the public hearing, pertains to these three properties. Frontier Ag, which is storage of the John Deere implements. Property owned by Randy Retzickel. Randy had been at the, one of the public hearings where we didn't have a quorum as a property owner. I've spoken with Randy about this. He's spoken in favor of amending the B2 District with the limited industrial uses, as well as rezoning his property from the Medical Plan Unit Development District to the amended B2. So he owns this. Thousand Hills happens to be a tenant in the building owned by Mr. Retzickel. And then here is the former grandpa's garage, the property owned, now owned by Dave Olson. We spoke previously about that. These properties were rezoned back in 2012 to the Medical Campus Plan Unit Development with the intent of encouraging, or at least allowing through zoning, and encouraging through zoning, the development of medical-related uses, professional offices, medical, purpose buildings, et cetera. Not much has happened since that zoning occurred, so the request now, as initiated by the Planning Commission, is to eliminate the zoning for those three properties and as a Medical Campus Plan Unit Development. They're the only three parcels in town with that zoning classification. But rezone it from that PUD classification back to the B2 District, which is what it was before. And now if there's going to be an amended B2 District, adding the limited uses by conditional use permit, these three properties would be allowed to be developed for those limited uses as well, if the ordinance is amended. So again, it's these three parcels that are subject to the public hearing tonight. I've spoken, as I've told the commissioners before, I've spoken, obviously, to Mr. Olson, as well as Randy Retzickel and Steve Bauer, who own the other two parcels proposed for rezoning. They've both spoken in favor of this. At this point, have no objection. In fact, would encourage the Planning Commission to recommend the rezoning back to the amended B2 for those properties. So that's the introduction. We've put public notice in the beacon of this hearing. I've had no other calls, no other contact, other than with the three property owners of people asking questions or expressing concern about this rezoning. Any questions from the commissioners or for the public, I guess?
Could you define bottling establishments again?
Bottling establishments, again, would be Pepsi, Pepsi-Cola. If Pepsi's made offsite and they bring it here, they actually physically put them in the bottles, that would be the bottling type establishment.
Alright.
Limited industrial use. Questions?
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone else have any comments?
Pretty.
Well, since there's really no discussion here, do I have a motion for Resolution 2016-3?
Make motion.
I've got a motion by Mr. Hema and a second by Mr. Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to discussion item, Resolution 2016-4, which is really very similar. This is just to actually change the zoning so that it will include those other items. Was there anything in that list that was of concern?
Nothing.
I should just mention the commissioners, there was one item of conversation at the July 11th meeting, and I think Dave Price brought it up, so I'll comment in terms of what was done here in the amended Residential Business District. But again, to remind everyone on the commission of our prior conversations, ironically, our Residential Business District classification doesn't allow residential development, at least as permitted uses. So what this amendment would do would allow single and two-family dwellings to be permitted in the Residential Business District with this amendment. And in response to some of the questions that I believe Commissioner Price brought up to me previously, is it would also, since the standards right now in the Residential Business District don't specifically reflect single and two-family dwellings, we need to amend the language too, to have lot sizes, setbacks, et cetera. And what I've done here in this proposed language is reflect, again, that the minimum lot size in the Residential Business District would be the standard, original town lot, 60 foot wide by 142 foot deep. So that's 8,520 square feet is the minimum lot size for a single-family dwelling in this zoning classification. And then the setbacks pretty much follow our single and two-family zoning ordinance for other districts. So that's where those numbers come from. So with these additional standards, that would be consistent with our other residential zoning standards in our other single-family, two-family residential zoning districts.
Will it, the change then bring up other additional conversation from people who may be interested in these changes?
Yeah, I think what.
The land that would apply to?
I receive questions periodically, not just in the Residential Business District, but let's use this example, where people will call me and say, "I've got a single-family home, I'm in the Residential Business District. Am I okay? Am I legal?"
Yeah.
And the answer is yes. They're legal because they were grandfathered in in 2006. But where the problem comes is when they then tell me, "I want to put an addition on."
Yeah.
And they can keep their existing structure, they can keep their existing use, but when it comes to an addition, they may not be able to do that. With this amended language in the Residential Business District, that clarifies that and cleans that up. So they're going to move from a legal non-conforming status. If you have a single-family home in the Residential Business District, this amendment takes you out of the legal non-conforming into legal.
Right.
So then you're able to come to me as zoning administrator and say, "I want to do something that's allowed in the residential district. I want to put an addition on. I want to do a garage in the back half of my lot." They're going to be allowed to do that now legally and not have either a rezoning or a zoning amendment at that point. So it really cleans that up.
So good, so it will do some good, maybe, to get things going.
Yes. Yes. Yep.
What was the purpose of the ordinance to start out with?
Well. I think.
You confuse us a little bit.
I think what happened with regards to Residential Business District, Mike, I mean, it's a large area of our community. We have a lot of area over here that's zoned residential business. And I think probably, it's just my suspicion, what may have happened back in 2004, '05, and '06, before the new ordinance was adopted, the folks looked at this and they saw industrial uses, they saw multifamily development, they saw commercial uses, they saw some public uses, they saw just a mix of land uses and couldn't quite grasp a solution that everyone could agree on and say, "Okay, this is what we ought to do." So there was a large area rezoned to this Residential Business District classification. And it's been our most problematic zone since then.
Industrial trying to get along with residential, vice versa?
Yeah. Right. It's, and this will kind of be a stopgap measure. If it goes ahead, it'll clean up at least the single and two-family dwellings in this zone. But probably, at some point going forward, there may be other rezonings that would take, say, this area here, the malt house as an example, and some of our other large industrial uses that are in this Residential Business District zone, maybe they should be rezoned to industrial, or maybe they should be rezoned something other than Residential Business District. Or if they're closed and vacant, maybe a whole new zone should be applied to those properties. So it's kind of a sticky wicket, as we've talked about around the commission level. And I think this cleans up a fair amount of the problems that we've had in that district.
Sounds like a headache.
A headache. That would be the good answer. It was a headache.
Oh, 2004, '05, and '06, it was.
Yeah, it was tough.
There was more people sitting out there than there was up here. Always mad about something.
Yeah.
Nothing fit.
Right. Any more questions on this one?
None. Well, that brings us to Resolution 2016-4. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I've got a.
Does it have to accompany the corrections, or did you already, that's already listed?
It's listed with them. Yep.
Yeah, he's got it all ready for us today. I've got a motion by Mr. Price and a second by Ms. Sharnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to 7C Water Street McCusker Land Sale Comprehensive Plan.
This is not a public hearing, I'm not gonna, ooh.
Oh. We didn't even really open and close those, did we? Okay, well.
Discussion item.
Nobody was here.
Yeah. Nobody is.
Seems like we did.
Somebody's going to come running in now.
That's not right.
Wasn't going to turn off the lights on this, but I guess I have to. This is the new, relatively recent realigned water street in this location. Here's the old depot site, former railroad building. Leroy McCusker lives right here. Cannon River back over in this area.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're all kind of generally familiar with the site. Long story short, is Leroy McCusker is interested in purchasing some property in this area from a private landowner seller, and along with that, vacating an existing alley, which is located here. And then there's a remnant piece of property that kind of borders the vacated alley that he would like to acquire from the city. To the extent that he puts these properties back together again, he will create a residential lot just to the west of his house. So that's what he wants to do. And in order to get there, it's taking a fair amount of legal work and survey work to kind of quote-unquote "clean" this area up. This is a former railroad spur line that goes through here. The original block really is like this, with the vacated alley in the middle. When the city did this street, my understanding is that maybe some of this was supposed to be taken care of and maybe it didn't get done. So now, Mr. McCusker has come to the Public Works Commission of the City Council. He's asked for their recommendation to, recommend to the City Council that this property be sold to him, once the alley's vacated. The City Council will hold a public hearing on September 6th to consider the vacation of this alley. If the council approves that, then Mr. McCusker will have kind of a clean path to having the city decide to sell this remnant piece of property to him or not. The Public Works Commission of the City Council is recommending to the council that they do go ahead and sell it. So to get there, anytime the city sells land, there's a statutory requirement that comes back to the Planning Commission or council that talks about the relationship of the plan, or excuse me, the property that's proposed to be sold to the comprehensive plan for the city. So as an example, if this area was designated for years and years and years in a comprehensive plan as a future park location, state law wants to make sure that Planning Commission, City Council state that and talk about that before they decide to sell land that might be considered as a future park. That doesn't apply in this case. This is a remnant piece of property, part of it's what's going to be a vacated alley. We see no public purpose of the city retaining this piece of property. It's not developable by itself. But if the alley is vacated and this area bordered in pink is sold to Mr. McCusker, that then will allow him to have the additional land area and the access to Water Street, the realigned Water Street, that he needs to create a single-family lot in this location. So the question of the commission tonight is, does this remnant parcel or not have any kind of relationship to the comprehensive plan? My recommendation, my review says no, it does not. It's a remnant piece of property. It's going to be probably part of a vacated alley that's no longer needed by the city. So much has changed in this neighborhood in the last 15, 20, 30, 40 years, that it really isn't a piece of property that the city.
Used to be.
Has any real need for at this point. So if you agree to that, just looking for, we've had one issue like this in the past where I've asked you to do this, and in a case like this, we're just asking you to say, it really doesn't, there's really no purpose of this, of the city holding this particular piece of property.
Can anybody think of a reason the city should hold the piece of property?
And it doesn't affect. There's half a dozen other things around town that should be the same thing done with them.
It doesn't affect any driveway or anything to the depot or the.
There's no driveway or anything there?
No. No.
Yeah.
It's part of his circle drive.
I think we should, we should plan on trying to vacate that street. Nobody's going to put pavement on there.
It's a good creative idea.
Yeah.
Doesn't hurt anything, does it?
Gives us one more buildable lot.
It creates a buildable lot. Yep.
Is that a berm back there where the old track used to be? I can't remember if that's higher or not. Is it?
That's kind of a berm, yeah.
Is it a flood zone if they take that out?
The solution to get past easement, it drops right off to the river.
Right.
Goes down quick.
Yep, back in here.
Yeah, that's all flood zone.
You don't see it on this aerial, because I stopped it, but yeah, I mean, it, there's a lot of woods, a lot of drop-off back to the Cannon River as you go north from this particular property. There will be a buildable site in here, but as you go north towards the river, it's.
Yeah. Goes down quick.
Right. And you've got flood plain and other river-related restrictions for development there, so.
So give them room, yeah. It's like a good idea.
We should vacate that street.
We should do that.
What else do we need to do? The street's going on vacation.
There you go. So I see a consensus of no real public purpose to retain this property, and I would agree with that.
We would have liked to seen Leroy here, though.
I did it, right?
The fellow is taking his chances by not coming.
He's probably smart not to come. We might abuse him a bit.
Well, he always asks everybody else a thousand questions.
He'd be fair game. He's smart. Knows the stairway. Good.
That brings us to Planning Commission member comments.
Comments?
I think it's a lovely idea to get rid of it.
What's that?
Piece of property you were just talking about.
Oh, yeah, he's got it, yeah.
Vacated.
Let's sell it. For a lot.
I hope he does.
We know he needs it back.
I hope he does that.
We'll get raises then.
You can make a recommendation for value if you like.
Yeah.
As many zeros as you can put on it.
Well, you know, enough to make it fair, I think.
So, yeah, I don't got anything, nothing on my side. I got a new garage going up, my alley. That's going good.
Is that yours?
No.
Oh.
My neighbor's.
Well.
So that's good to see.
Anybody else have anything?
I don't have anything.
They're coming along out on 86, I see.
Yeah. By the time it snows, we'll be able to use it.
Is that?
You can actually.
Will that open it?
Stick around it.
Because I thought that one, somewhere I saw it was a two-year project.
There's a what?
We have it, I thought they had it posted up as a two-year project.
Takes another two years they're doing something.
You know, if that's what it was supposed to take, they should have hired those guys that did that one up in Hampton.
Dakota County.
Because that went up fast.
Yeah, maybe the connecting.
Over 47. I think it was only down a couple of months.
They'll get her done. Yeah, they're starting to haul in dirt on the east side today, with the ramps in.
Yeah. Pulling up the whole block.
For the onramps. It's figured to be done by Thanksgiving, I think.
Oh, yeah.
They're almost ready to start pouring the deck up on top.
Yep. That'll go quick.
Once they pour that, they have 30 days and they can put traffic on it.
Has to sit for 30, huh?
Well, even when they're doing those footings, they pour part of the footings and then they let it sit for a while.
They have to.
Do something else.
Won't cure.
Yeah. Anybody else got anything?
Are they doing anything out on the south side of town? Anything going on out there?
They're still planning to do the taper on the roundabouts yet this year, aren't they?
Yes, but they haven't selected a date yet. I think they're waiting in part for the 86 project to kind of get completed. So, yeah, there'll be some, there'll be some rework done on the, on the roundabouts by Mendat to correct some things there.
They need a wider sidewalk so that when the semis come around, that it's not up into the grass.
It's not like they're going to run over people on those sidewalks. They can use the sidewalks.
I don't think I've seen anybody walking out there.
Not much. There's a few people that walk out.
Do you know them?
Few bicycles once in a while.
Anything from the county on what they're going to do on the east side of town? From St. Ansgers, cut over to the.
Oh, as far as finishing it?
As far as starting it.
Yeah. I don't have a revised schedule from Greg Isaacson on.
What was your last schedule? What did it say last time?
Uh, no schedule.
The bats were a problem?
Yeah.
No money's available. That's the answer you get all the time.
Well, I think that, you know, it's still a design issue between Mendat, Goodyear County, and the property owner. That's still what seems to be holding it up in addition to the bat issue.
Some property owners that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that everything's finalized on the alignment yet, so. Mentioned that both Cannon Valley Trail and Dakota and Goodyear Counties at Billsby are both doing master development plans for the Cannon Valley Trail and the park out at Billsby. And I'll be reporting to the commission on those. I sit on the group involved with both of those plans, so it'll be interesting.
Looks like they got the rest of that paved, didn't they?
Yeah.
Just the last few days here.
Put black dirt along the edges yesterday.
Yep.
Fitzgerald work every day.
There are a lot of people that walk in the morning, well, all day out at the south side. It's great for walking, even if, especially if you've got any kind of bad legs like I do. It's flat, there's no cracks and no curbs to go over. It's just sweet to walk on that thing and watch the butterflies.
Right.
A lot of people use it. Take their dogs out there.
Something new.
Yeah, yeah. Need a dog park out there next, or someplace.
They're working on that. They're trying to figure out where to put it.
Yep.
What's that?
They're working on a dog park. We're just trying to figure out where to put it exactly.
Right.
The tentative plan.
And it's end would probably be the best one.
Yeah, the tentative plan right now, they're talking, is down behind where the old Hardee's and Mexican.
The Artisan.
The Mexican or the hard, the old Hardee's or Subway.
Where we're there, okay.
There's a large.
Between the, down in the valley there, between the bank and the subway.
That'd probably be a nice.
There's a large parcel there that's got minimum land use alternatives to it. A part of the property will be used by Mendat for right-of-way for the overpass, if and when it's funded and construction at the old 24. And it's a tax forfeit piece of property, so I know the council's authorized us to go ahead and work with Goodyear County on that, both for potentially a dog park, as well as some right-of-way for transportation purposes.
Yes, be an attractive addition. People are always asking. Well, it's good for the dogs, too. I think it's just good for the people.
Right.
Socialize.
Right.
It's a good thing. I don't have anything else.
Has anybody other than myself been invited out to Leon Hansen's to look at his next proposal?
No.
Just me then, huh?
Just you.
Is that in the city limits?
I've been in some conversations with Mr. Hansen on that, too. And, you know, we rezoned that area to urban reserve when Leon built his house. Those are 10-acre minimum lots. I think Leon's is 12 acres, and there was two lots next to Leon, both 11-acre lots or so. And that's all been zoned urban reserve. And now the question is, what's going to happen with some of the adjoining parcels to those three lots? And I've been in communication with Mr. Hansen as well. And we may or may not see an application that would have to come, you know, public hearing or otherwise, to the commission. We'll see what the plan is, and then we'll decide from there, you know, how to involve the Planning Commission with that. So it's, as we talked about when we rezoned it to urban reserve the first time before Mr. Hansen built this house, I mean, there's a lot of bluff land out there, there's a lot of woods, there's certainly some level land as you get down close to Highway 20. But the question has always been, what's the best land use for that area? And at that time, the decision was made that estate lots were probably as reasonable a land use as anything, given the topography and the bluffs and the woods out there. So we'll see, but I think there's some conversation about what's going to happen now, you know, beyond those three lots, and I'm guessing that's what.
Make commercial interest in the city.
What's the state say as far as access on the road there?
You know, they've got the one access that serves the three lots now, and that is going to be a question because, well, it's identified as Fifth Street, but we get down by.
Molinar's there.
Yeah, when you get down there, that's, I don't believe that's ever been a platted street. street. It may be an easement dedicated to the city, I don't know, but that's technically identified as Fifth Street, and that's not in a location that would be a wise spot for another access or an improved access, which would bring more traffic at that complicated intersection already. So that is gonna be a question, and what's the land use gonna be? Is it gonna be more estate lots of 10 acres or more? That's one thing. If it's gonna be something else, well, then the access becomes even a bigger question. So, we'll have to see.
I'm gonna access it to the south further.
Well, I mean, back, because the road that was built to serve Olmstead Medical Clinic is still supposed to extend east up the hill, up to Fifth Street, up near the city's well house.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that right-of-way has been acquired, we own that, but there's no call at this point to extend that road further east and up the hill. But it could be at some point, and then that could be coming back on Fifth Street or somewhere else in there. That could be the other out of those estate lots. We'll have to see.
Any other commercial interest in the city?
There's still progress being made on the proposed hotel site. And again, that's, the preferred location is on the southwest side of 52, back near where the Victorian House was behind Midwest. That's still the preferred site location. We may be seeing a public workshop with the city council on that project on September 6th. That's been the date that's been discussed, but they're still raising, the development team is still raising equity investments, you know, for the hotel. So we'll see between now and next Tuesday, and what happens with that. So that's there. Dave Olson continues to move forward. If you haven't been out at Grandpa's Garage, he continues to move forward with cleaning and evaluating, you know, the redevelopment potential of that site based on the use that he's discussed with you. Cannonbells Cheese, who are the gals who are proposing to develop a cheese facility in this community, are looking very closely at the feasibility of locating in that building, consistent with what Dave Olson, you know, suggested he was looking for when he came to meet with us in July. So we're still working with him on that. Going, you know, the rezoning is certainly gonna help move that project forward, put him in a situation where he's got some flexibility with what happens, if anything, beyond just the food aspect of redeveloping Grandpa's Garage. So we'll see what happens there.
Is Mendat considering any exits off of 52 down that way?
Is what?
Is Mendat considering exits near the Cannonball area or any of that area?
No.
Absolutely not.
No.
Nothing in, nothing
No.
I got you, hear you.
No.
Just wondering if they ever mentioned, just an exit, you know, on either side. No.
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 The safety study was done.
I know.
And there's still been some interest expressed by a number of property owners to reestablish access onto 52.
But no.
I don't see it happening.
Well, especially if they're gonna put a, just a drive-across bridge over there.
The overpass, right.
Yeah. If that was their intent, I would think that it would be really
Right.
hard to direct traffic around.
Right.
I know the correct answer now. No. Thank you, though.
And I'm reporting on behalf of Mendat, not viewing my own personal opinions.
I understand.
Well, and really, you know, it'd probably make just as much sense either way, right there. I mean, if you had the on and off, and you couldn't really cross the highway there, but you get on, you know, going north or off.
Yeah, you had to south, coming south, you had to get off, and going north, you had to get back on. That revitalized a little bit of what the
But they're not gonna
section being taken out took away.
They're not gonna do it.
I got an idea. Let's just skip that overpass and get those put in. They'd probably be happier with that. Wouldn't it cost a lot less money?
And get what?
Wouldn't it cost a lot less money to just put the off-ramp northbound and on-ramp northbound, and then same thing on the other side?
I can do it.
You know, I don't know about the money side of it. It seems like there's less expensive transportation changes that could be made, less expensive than an overpass, clearly, but they're not gonna be permitted. And again, what the safety study showed is that, to whether it's off-ramps only, or on and off ramps, or some split on one side versus the other, whatever is done to change traffic patterns from what they are today on 52 is viewed as a safety concern by Mendat. It's gonna disrupt the free flow of traffic through that part of the community by, and by adding off-ramps, on-ramps, whatever combination you wanna look at, that's gonna impact the free flow of traffic, and it's gonna create safety concerns for Mendat. And Mendat's been very clear to say, it's not in their plan.
Well, a lot of people got to see downtown Cannon Falls.
Yes.
What about in front of Twin Rivers? There was some talk about changing the elevation on the DOT's level with Highway 19?
I haven't heard that.
What, other?
Up or down, or for what purpose?
From what I heard, they were gonna drop the elevation two feet right out in front of Twin Rivers. I don't know if you've seen all the markings up there to illustrate where the power and the gas are.
I haven't heard that.
That's just what I heard from Twin Rivers. They were
Okay.
Thought maybe you might know something about it.
Yeah, no, I have not heard anything, and Tom Burgerson hasn't mentioned that to me, Chief McCormick. So if Mendat's talking about doing it, I don't think they've communicated with us.
Let's go home.
Does anyone else have any comments? Hearing no comments, that brings us to number nine, adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Price and a tie for a second here. Hema and Charnell, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.